We stand ovationally as we welcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is the best, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So before we go into public commentary thing, I just want to preface this meeting in very different terms. Travis has been called out to go down to Oregon. We had a water pump failure, so we went down and got parts, and it should be fixed by today, I hope. And John Sheridan has been excused, and Dietrich is setting up. Okay, so it's been a Monday. So, public comment. Public comment here, the audience, Jeff, if you would come on down. That water? Oh, yes. Okay.
The other thing is, when Travis pulled together the, well, we, you know, the, the doggy, there were six entries in the 2012, 2014 plan. I mean, some of those might be the possible, I'm watching some back, that we need to, I can't remember, this is going way, way back. But, you know, the port had used funds, and I don't know if they were general funds or water, but they used funds anyway to start the eyes and pound Dr. Wholet's book. And so, they're looking at, that's an area you're looking to.
Okay.
Being that it's mainly, I don't mind that, so down south. But, the other thing I recall too is that, just a, first word, I'll take a financial report. We do need to look further into, now, whatever, to probably get, actually, for us to, will mean something that you, the board, or you, the public, can look at, say, oh, yeah, oh, no, or we, no, or whatever. Because, as an example, you can't tell that we're over budget on the legal side for water fund. You just can't tell. I can't say, I mean, they might be there, but, and honestly, how the board can be able to tell them, you know, board needs to know, maybe to know whether this point of budget is not, you know, at least stuff on your evidence. There's more things that go over budget than the water fund. The rates stay higher for lobby. No limit to that.
All right. Thank you. Because I mean, here, health in the audience wants to do a public comment. Okay. Pardon? Is somebody coming in, or are they coming in? Okay. Yeah, I see Ken, but I have somebody else coming in to the building. You're sorry. That's all right. Ken, go ahead. You are muted, so please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, the audio is very poor. I hardly heard a word Jeff said. But, I would like to talk about those letters that were developed for the Belfair sewer extension. I've been involved with the Belfair sewer for over twenty-plus years. I and Mr. Gary Parrott and Kitsap County Commissioner Phil Best made many comments on the original sewer plan. One of the original alternatives was an extension to the Puget Sound Industrial Center, but it was abandoned because they felt they didn't have enough time to build an MOA. That's exactly what the, the port, or excuse me, that's exactly what the city of Bremerton and Mason County are trying to do right now, is to make a memorandum of agreement. I listened to the Belfair sewer meeting with the Bremerton mayor there and with the commissioners, and I saw that Mr. Merrill and Mr. Curtin attended. There was no public comment at that meeting, but it was interesting. I saw that you took a letter from Mr. Phil Wolf and put it as a supporting document. I also saw a letter from Mr. Jack Johnson, but that didn't end up in your supporting document. I think it's very premature for the port to take a position on this. It would be, I see in one of the letters that you supposedly did an analysis, and I would like to see that analysis, and I think you should share it with your constituents if you are gonna, but, you folks are late to the process, and I really don't think you should take a position either way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Online, do we have somebody? Yes. Go ahead then.
Ah, yes. Yeah. Hi, Commissioner, this is Joe Sederlin. Just wanted to comment on the water system and the slow speed at which things seem to be moving there with the merger of the carry system and the port system. And disappointed that things are taking this long. It seems like the port is overextended with too many projects, with Sweetwater and the Oyster House and the pier, all remaining unfinished. And, you know, looking at the notes from the purchase discussion, when the carry water system was purchased, Director Coppola had recommended that the system be purchased between five and fifteen hundred dollars a connection, and the port apparently decided the taxpayer fund would be appropriately used in spending four hundred and forty-seven thousand for the system, probably the highest price ever paid in Washington state history for a Class B water system. Now, if the port thought it was that important to spend that much money for a water system, then why was it taking a year and a half to have that system merged with the current port system? When the current port system had, when we first came in a plot of island, was represented to us, there was three hundred and thirty-two connections available, and then we found out after the fact that there's only a hundred and thirty-two. So, there's, there've been a lot of issues with the system and what's been represented, and it seems that it should be a high priority, given the current discussion between our, our legal representatives, that the port would be moving very quickly to get this merger wrapped up and be taking this matter seriously. So, I just wanted to comment on that, that we are concerned about the time this is taking, concerned about the direction the water system going, and it seems like if the port can't properly manage the water system and the improvements that's needed to keep development moving in the plat, that it should look at selling the water system to Washington Water or another capable water purveyor in the area. So, just wanted to make that comment and get that out in front of the commissioners. And so that this can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Do you like public comment? No? Okay. Okay, seeing none further. Do we have approval of the agenda? Want to add or subtract anything?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Ken, second that. All in favor say aye. So moved. Okay, consent agenda items, would you like to make a motion? I, and I think if you can pull a point, I think, or do you want to just get rid? Pardon? I can do that. Yeah, that's all right.
So, it would be the special meeting briefing workshop minutes of May 1st, 2025, regular meeting minutes, May 12th, 2025, with the correction of the spelling on the very best version. May Treasury Journal's funds literally in fourteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars and six cents, who's all being our center trust, this bank transfers agency, rebonds, and loans, and for being saved interest. Many Treasury water funds got about total seven thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents, if who's all this on bank transfers, and investment interest. May IDB bond investment interest, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents, your today's five hundred and one dollars, thirty-two cents. IDB investment tunnel, thirty-five thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-six cents. May water fund investment interest, one hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents, will be your today's four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents, and a water fund investment will be fifty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents, and loan or comp, loan free can for general water fund for residence. Number twenty-four, that, Earl one five, of one thousand two hundred and six dollars and it's recessed.
Hey, do I hear a motion to approve? Ken, I'll second it. All in favor say aye. Aye, so moved. Commissioners report. Michael, what do we got?
Uh, well, see, first, in the last week, we, on May fifteenth, we'll see the, the Belfair sewer system, connection to Kitsap. That's, that's, alright, could not be, could not wait, there.
Ken, hear you.
Well, you have to holler, I guess. Holler into the mic.
I was just saying, attended the meeting on the fifteenth for the sewer system with commissioners and Kitsap County, especially considering what's what we do, it affects the economic development in our area, so we should definitely be a part of it, and should actually be more a part of it than we happen, in my opinion. You attended workshop, and EDC meetings, I'll tell, later, so.
Okay, great. Mine might be a little too much, but, of course, the May twelfth, regular port meeting, May fourteenth through the sixteenth, I attended the Washington Public Works Association Spring Conference. Some of the takeaways, they have legislator, legislature's got a bill about trying to, actually, it's the media that's trying to get a one-day turnaround for asking for any public records that want to turn around in one day. Yes, because they want to do, you know, stories, so they want things right away. But, as you know, we're, Washington Public Forces fighting against that because, like, a small course, there's no way we could get that turned around in a day. So, that's one of the things to take away from there. The other thing was, just an interesting tidbit, there's a Columbia Basin project, and this, this is mostly in eastern Washington, which, you know, supplements our food, income of taxes, the whole ball of wax. And that was really interesting to see how big a project that is. Another little tidbit on too, I guess, I don't remember what year this was, I think it was the early two thousands, that the state authorized water rights for water than what they had available. And so, that's one of the things that they're trying to, to remedy down there. So, I thought that was interesting. There's a lot more there's legislative updates as well. I don't know how boring that will be for everybody, so I won't go into that. The other item would be, I wanted to say about Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization. I was not able to attend because it was the same time that Washington Public Force was, but they would like your review on the 2025 Regional Transportation Plan update. And actually, I think it's in two days is the deadline. So, you can get online, if you go to, I think, Wash dot, that, you know, Washington Department of Transportation, and in there is Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization, or you can also get ahold of the coordinator, Sarah Black, and she's Sarah B at peninsula r t p o dot org, if you want to find out more information. So, there's that, and then, of course, I attended the Q and C meeting, and then June fourth, I was at North Shore to greet all the shrimp season people, make sure they paid, and then June sixth, I met Bonnie and Travis about the Oyster House and see what we could do to update and get things going. So, there we go. On that. Next is the executive director's report, and as I had just mentioned, that Travis is on the road getting a pump repaired so we can get water back on, onboard. Michael, would you like to, Justine, Justine Nix, just want to introduce her, Justine Nix, she's going to read, get the executive director's report.
Okay. The need for, the regular business administrative purpose, Dom has a broken ankle, and is out for a minimum of two to four weeks before he can be fitted for walking fast. In the meantime, the answer is being completed by most volunteers, Commissioner Curtin, myself, and Director Merrill. And this was approved at the last special meeting, and we will start working with Rassman promptly tomorrow, to fill the gaps while Dom is out. He attended the annual legislative rapport hosted by the Mason County Public Work Building on May fourteenth, May five, and in progress with Johnson, Mason Chamber of Commerce, or Mason Chamber of Commerce, Mason County, and the EDC of Mason County, the other alternative cover guys with a TV, very easily, and the executive for that. On May fifteenth, Mason County Board of Commissioners held a special meeting about possibly extending the Belfair sewer system into Kitsap County, their last only there. During that period of May, Commissioner Director Merrill attended North Mason Chamber, and at that meeting, Wendy Carroll and the presented material on Sweetwater Park project and updated them on the current projects. The chamber voted unanimously to approve drawing an updated letter of support for the project, and then the Kuanas, Joe, Doye, Dean, I hope I'm saying that right, of North Boys and Children's, out creased presented information about their organization. At last, the day of last meeting, I have, Travis has added their official literature, Carol Oscars. Of course, annual reports was filed with the state auditor's report on May twenty-eighth, before the May thirtieth deadline. They will be in contact with the work later this year to begin a Detroit annual audit. We've invested zero dollars from the general fund, fifty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine and fifty cents from the water fund, and thirty-five thousand six hundred and thirteen and forty-six from the IDB fund. The annual holiday event produced by the Alan Community Association, I've been saying Alan, was well attended, the workers presented community, what they knew better through, is the eighty-one that sits on the neighboring property on five every, very, and maybe, I'd say, it was designed to get reinstalled in the days after the service, but O'Donnell injury, this install, installation has been delayed. Water system developments. Water testing that you use has required to be done has gone back and is ready for some of all, these are routine tests that just happen to be due by end of year. So, that's the book, and I have asked the rest, the court is truly less, it's water, okay. Once Weston engineers finish this bid items packet, we'll be ready to go up then over the MRSC, the water system, this packet and the water testing are the last problems for custom IDOH for root bulk consolidation. The revisions to the water policy are taking more time than a fair play, they are still in hand, of course, the goal also in our main, to prevent it from first check of any maintenance. Once it is received back, there will be a schedule of, 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 both water ready to add those last recommendations, before both the water contracts and the water policy are set, before the pressure from that help. Water ready. The meetings are still postponed until we can get those back. Here are repairs, we have remaining files, oh. Sorry, four hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and the remaining, uh, since that's June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, let's switch to, let's list of reappropriation is confirmed, was assigned by Governor Bob Ferguson, for the repairs to the current year and designs of a new pair, and we're on the replacement. The venue time, I don't know, is being constructed by work staff, or submitted to Mason County Building Department for permitting, it will be updated, has probably updated as, uh, no change from last month's report on boat maintenance. We are working on finding admin time to get some proposals, the boats on both the North Shore and Allen facilities are in need of being removed from this sealed plastic boat tops. This is something that has been done on a semi-regular basis over the years, and is now due for preventive update. Director Merrill will be reaching out to local diving companies to get boats for boats' facilities. Pumpout stations, with the power restored to the septic pumpout station, it has been determined that plumbing repairs will be necessary for week three operation. Exploration of contractors that can repair will take place, and it's in, the time can be freed up to scope, scope it out for MRSC. Oyster House relocation, we still have our free grants, renovation of what Oyster House, totaling forty-one thousand forty-four dollars and forty-six cents, plus our managed heritage grant funds called by the North Bank Historical Society. The ports request that these three cars, one car to extend it, begin thirty twenty twenty-seven, is out in front of the signage of the state, budget by Governor Bob Ferguson. Reappropriation gives us projects on breathing, who work through the red tape and image and inherent assets. There have been comments back from the draft request as called, they've been presented out over MRSC, and we hope to make those problems out. Security report, no suspicion actively joining of the plane. And then, this will be, moving on to Squatch and Swat, Swatson, Primal, New York. On another one, I'm interested, Swatson, Primal Nation, Charles from Arcadia, William Shelton to be out of water fund. They will write a note for the vision, they will arrive around noon for the exchange of mutual respect. We're asking about the commission and their schedule of this event and their counters.
What do you got, I don't know. It's good.
And then, the Belfar is, your extension included in the pressure packets are two letters, one in support of the Mason County Board of Commissioners extending the sewer into Kitsap County, and one against it, please review them, discuss if an action is necessary one-way or together. And when the batteries pass course, Travis wasn't able to attend the meeting. The no child left and signed grant awards have been released, and they didn't support, didn't score high enough to receive funding. They will reach all the grant every by next year.
Okay. Very good. Would be the regular business and administration improvements. I don't think that we need, since Travis isn't here, update any of that, you can go ahead and skip that, the water system development. Jeff, do you have a comment, anything about that?
No, I just, I'm curious, and basically, the whole, we're not as not, I second.
Oh, yeah, right, because we're reading on plant, I mean.
Beautiful view. It wasn't originally that way scheduled, was, that, you know, Travis met with, I, you know, thought that the, because it's good to have this well, from my, from my mind, getting able, but, this is, I'm mad. So, and, you know, basically, that, of course, needed by part of health, so that it, this time, you're working, you're trying to think, and find the two systems together, and, you know, otherwise, I'm not going to afford to that.
We get the engineering, correct? We get the engineering.
Yeah, yeah. And, at least, you can, I said, with, I know, Travis, honestly, he says, that there was no, technically, engineered, there was no, how to say, wasn't technically, there wasn't anything on that side, the whole thing is, or the red tape of engineering, maybe I put it on, I'm right, I put exactly down what was meant to be done, and how, how something about that, but as far as the test, as far as the, you know, the performance of your system, model system, and all, you know, all that's in between, it was thought that was equal, but what I mentioned, when, for, if I acquired the system, what, what to do, our, our own system, and the side of it's that, more so. And, like I mentioned in the workshop, if, once we get this done, then we're going to start collecting some data, and hopefully, address, combat some data demand issue that's significant, in force of some models, for the interval of two to one, and if, if they come in a little closer to that, that would be, you know, of course, at least a hundred or a hundred fifty more connections with the, like you have.
Correct.
Sure. Extension to that, in the plat, you know, certain areas, but, but as far as with the, you would not have to add another tank, you would not have to add another well, and, so, the short story is, it's kind of all way to connect, because I don't know if you go.
We can't go forward.
The way, the way the state has documentation and the regs, part of it is developers can connect to, of course, existing data fly, I remember that here, but they could not, even though the port has the capacity and our well has the capacity, they could not connect our system, do this merger, to sign off on this thing. And, you say, at least the, Travis is, oh, man, there's nothing, technically, you know, there's a problem that's doing that except getting these ports, which already got the water report, and, I'm just surprised, we're waiting on engineering, because that's not what we were at the beginning, engineers, I thought, folks, I could wrap it up, a couple weeks, so, you know.
All right, well, thank you. Nothing on the waterfront pier repairs, we kind of already dealt with that one. Oyster House relocation, Bonnie's in the audience, thanks for being back, you're Bonnie, and we'll get moving forward on that, as I had mentioned, we had a meeting to try to get some volunteers. Travis said he might have found somebody to start getting working on the interior and exterior, hopefully, anyway, it was good news, maybe, and I think there's somebody that you knew, I'm not sure, but, did you want to comment, Ken?
I talked to Travis, you said you had somebody that could do some of that.
Oh, yeah.
Call, just, just, regarding, just make sure that he's, yeah. There was some confusion about the premise being for both the dock and the building, and they've never been on the same crew. Yes, the building has its own building permit, and the shoreline, even though they're for the same project, but, different planning sources, and different criminal.
Okay.
See any problems, we've finished, oh, we've got some, I, we, we call it, nice.
Okay, great.
Travis didn't bring, we, we have for two years, I'm surprised.
Say that again. Say that again.
Our, uh, I have a very, we didn't say to say it's inappropriate.
Okay.
So ours needs decent, okay, we have no.
Okay. Well, we better push forward.
Yes, we are pushing.
Okay, uh, port safety and security, we kind of got that in our report. Okay, that's just been a good year. Uh, setting of the time and date for our monthly hybrid workshop and special meeting. Um. I, without John here, I don't know if we could. Do that, um, we could try to set up something, and if it doesn't work, then.
If otherwise, it's kind of, uh.
Yeah.
It missed, we can't wait to.
I guess.
Catch, Roger.
Um. Good dish, Emily, you know, it's typical, we've often had it like a week before. Like maybe the last week in June. What do you think about that?
Uh. Depends on the day, because it can be harder to be good. On. On that Tuesday, Wednesday, or Monday, Wednesday and Friday, and I, but Don was.
What about Thursday? The twenty-sixth.
I am open for twenty-sixth.
Well, let's tentatively do that.
Can I ask a question about the Oyster House real quick? So is there a, a location you guys have, like, set upon for where it's going to have its final resting spot?
Yes, it, it's been.
Where's that at?
At the old launch ramp, which is right in front of here, is, so that's where the, so that's where the, um, the, uh, where the fire is still for Alan days, destroying the matter? No, it's over in front, right up, up front here. Um, there's kind of a bulkhead there now.
Yeah.
And that's where the launch ramp used to be, so that's where.
So is it like by, like across from like the bathrooms?
No, no, it's right, it's right there.
So it could be in the parking lot at all then.
That's not, yeah, that's what the plan is, and get it.
And it's going to.
It's just going to block the view of a lot of the water.
This is not as long as we have cars that we can. I mean, that's what we're worried about is parking for Alan, this is already kind of, you know, threatened a little bit. Now, the case has been solved.
Well, parking doesn't really matter, there, we've been hearing a lot from the community about it taking up the view from the water. And people out here enjoying the park and enjoying, you know, everything, it just taking up the view of the water and seeing out across the water. So, that's why we're just concerned.
Okay.
I really don't care about parking.
I care about.
I care more about, I care more about the view, so.
Right.
Okay.
What, what are we talking? Uh, what time would you like it?
Uh, well, you've been doing it like nine o'clock.
Which is fine, yeah, that's fine with me.
So, it works for me.
That's a public meeting.
Yes, it's a public meeting, yeah.
Wait.
It's a special meeting slash workshop. Okay, so we got, uh, that one done, uh, now the tribal canoe journey, um, and I think we had posted one. Ten years ago, I guess. Um, and they make a canoe trip, not just the Squatch and Try, we can, as well comes through here, so. Do you have a time, did they give you a time? Wow, that's early.
No, you said that they were going to show up here at noon. They live, leave their place at nine and show up here at noon.
Well, good, thank you for that, okay.
We, we.
They, they, they beat some, they beat some, Richard and I. And.
I, no, I was at work.
That we met with them and so that we could talk with them and stuff, so that they could be part of our community a little bit more.
Do they do this every year?
Yeah, they do the canoe journey every year.
Oh, and guys was every year, that's excellent.
They, oh, lots, they have it, and they all get on the beach, they're excited, they don't get a lot of tryouts, even the lummies will come down and all the others from the city. Trials.
Yes, that's wonderful, I want to, yeah.
Me too.
Uh, last time we provided water, so maybe we could do that. Okay.
Okay, ACA is going to put a stage up for them so that they can do some sort of something. That's, that's what I, Courtney had told me that he's going to, because it's the day, the day after Alan days, and so they're setting up something for them to keep it up so that they can use it too, or some.
Uh, so.
Eighteen, back on twentieth.
Third weekend in July.
Third weekend in July.
And, um, with Dawn being out, um, could you guys give us a list of stuff that we can help out with? Um, on maintenance stuff, because we've got people that can help keep up, you know, the lawn, bushes, anything like that, if there's anything that's plumbing, electrical, whatever. So.
We're very proud of the ACA.
Okay, oh, great, thank you.
So, I mean.
We, yeah.
A list, a list.
Perfect, yeah.
Nineteen to twenty.
Yeah, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I come in on Thursday and start getting everything set up where the vendors, so technically seventeen, is when we started.
So is the canoe journey in June or July?
July, July.
Some of the, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have Charlene's information too, I'll make, that one of the, the ladies that we met with, it's, one of the ladies in charge, if you may.
Yeah, okay.
She does a lot of the museum stuff with the trial.
Really? Oh, yes, we want to get all of her, that's great, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, I appreciate you guys having your meeting at four so that we could attend.
Well, good, so there's one helping, yes.
There was supposed to be more of us, I don't know what happened to them, so.
There's supposed to be more of us too.
The heat just dropped everybody.
Excellent, well, thank you, babies, I appreciate that very much. That's wonderful. Okay, now the port commission, uh, about the sewer connection extensions. Um, Mike, I'll let you lead off, because I, I did watch, I didn't attend, but I did watch it. And I'll let you speak a little bit first, and I'll give my two cents.
Uh. Um, when I got gathered from, when I was watching it, basically. Vermont, uh, kids that got it, you know, telling me free, you know. You know, they can put in whatever they want there, you know, whatever they aren't willing to restrict, let shops and stuff. They're going in, um, when I talked to, I've only talked to a couple, talked to, um, businesses, they're concerned. Really concerned, because they believe that it's going to greatly impact their business. Uh. The only, you know, the upside is, you know, the, the water system, or sewer system, do better. You know, connections, make more money and stuff, but it could really damage, that cannot develop it of. Our businesses, which is what we're supposed to be protecting. So, from my perspective, that's what I'm. Uh. The only, you know, upside is that you make this, you know, build it out there. And much people who think it weren't there, there's possibility to produce more homes in the local area. That would be a positive, but I think if we're going to. Do something like that, I think it should be in Mason County, so if it works better for us, because it's going to take revenue away. The offer is a main revenue for, uh, Mason County. And if it takes away a lot of revenue, then it can greatly harm all of Mason County. As well as your land damage and therefore business, so I'm against. So I know right, I don't, quite clear to be. And he's definitely. Um, I've only talked to one other commissioner, and he's still trying to weigh. The pros and cons and figure out, last time we talked, where he stands. He's not going one degree, he just wants to make, you know, but I think a letter from us, they. We disagree with, and you know, think it's a bad idea, and may have a whole way. Uh, being that affects our area, I don't understand why. Or that one has been part of this beginning, because it's kind of. You know, our, this is being affected, and we weren't even asked to be, have to. They're kind of trying to give us a round. And I don't think this.
I know part of that is because the county does ultimately make the decision. Um, but nevertheless, you know, that's why we weren't really involved, but, you know, watching that. Um, watching the meeting, having Sharon talk about getting more stakeholders involved, I think is really critical. Um, I too am very concerned about it, because like, like what you said, and whatever Randy say even is just. Concerned about what it can do for us, not, not just the short term, but the long term of economic development of businesses. I heard that, you know, we're concerned about the big box stores maybe going over there, but. Commissioner Tarzwell said, made a really interesting statement that the younger people don't really go shop anymore, so I don't see big box stores so much. But still, you know.
It depends on the big, I think it depends on the big box.
Well, if it's distribution.
But if it's, yeah, if it's like Home Depot. Or something like that, yeah, look at that. You're going to have to go to the big slide, that would greatly affect places like, uh.
The McLendons, yeah.
McLendons and, and.
Uh, Mitchell, yeah.
So are they talking about extending the sewer up to the business center, the, the?
Indicates that can.
Indicates, yeah. Into the city limits, yeah.
Can anybody comment?
Well, apparently, yes, go ahead, Ken, but let me finish what I'm saying, and then I'll get to you, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Um, finish, what I was going to say is that, you know, trying to make a decision on this. I, the one thing I was impressed with is at least they were sitting at the table and, and Randy was bringing up some good, good things about his concerns, and they were. Willing to look at that, and that they were thinking about, you know, if they were to sign, um, interlocal agreement or anything like that, or they even talked about a merger. We have to win at this, and I think they made that clear, that Mason County has to win. We have to get something good out of it, not give it away, so at least they know that, at least the city of Bremerton and, and. The port knows that, um, so I was encouraged by that. So I don't know if my thought might be premature. Because they have a lot of work to do, but. You know, if we, if we want to press forward, then we can talk about that some more. Um, go ahead, Ken, I'll, sorry.
No, that's all right, I'll, I'll wait until you finish your discussion, thank you.
Good, so. I'm definitely not for it, I can say that, because not at this point.
Yeah, and I see a lot of downside, a lot of upside for our businesses, and that's what I was concerned. Um. As it stands now, like you said, I think we should push forward. Just say we're against it to let, let them know that as is now, we are against what they're. One, they need to know that we should be more.
Well, I think they do know that, though, but I also know.
They weren't, they, you know.
Well, yeah, with this grant, true, but what was interesting about the grant that they got. Um, there's a lot of stipulations on that, where they can't just spend all this money on it, they did talk about, too, about. Preliminary work that would be out of pocket expenses now to the county and for them before they even take advantage of this grant. So, that's why I was a little, that's why I was a little hesitant about saying, no, don't do it, because there's a lot of footwork that has to be done first. Before they even come up with an agreement. So, you know, I just don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot too soon, that's all. Uh, but, again, my concerns are like what you are, we don't want to hurt our economic development future. But now that there's just two of us, we, you want, can we table it till John gets back?
Obviously, you'd have some time, so, can I table?
Okay.
Just as long as they don't present, you know, I think, no, but, we need to make sure they understand. Have concerns, legitimate concern.
Okay. Well, I'd like to table it till John gets back, and then, um, oh, okay, well, after Ken, okay. Okay, Ken, are we good? Ken?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to table it, and I'd like to see the analysis that you folks did in the one letter. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Yes, please.
Yeah, Karen, um, to listen to the video. Um, and as you know, I'm involved with the. Plan of, as of this time, and it, it keeps seeing a recurring problem here, that's here the last thirty years, and that is. We won't complete it, uh, facilities, but, you know, it's be anything in that, that whole presentation about anybody talking about, remember how it cancels out. And. I'm not all against it in that sense, but I'm saying, until we get our numbers, until we get, until we get a plan, and when I said we, you know, also. And I'm lobbying for Mason County to get a plan for the two, you know, north and sewers. I mean, it's again, it's in the wax, you know, Washington State Administration for dope to do these things, they haven't done. Or they've done a portion with like a bridge, but not the whole, the book, and my concern is this, that they didn't come in that long. They expanded up into the North Bay Bridge up down for fish, okay, that's great, but what's occurring, when I look at the finance of the twenty twenty-five of the budgets. Everyone, I won't say to everybody, that's not true, but a lot of people saying, okay, you, you got the system, you know, the Beltway system, or. Actually under it, but it, and that was, it's not sustainable. With apparent numbers, the way they're coming, unless we're going to completely pull rate money continually to the house. Uh, to give an idea, you only got six hundred some questions about, a little bit of, okay? You look what that is going to happen in. Forget the lows, forget the brands, get all the stuff, put it aside for sure. You're only bringing in almost one point ten million, one point, one point five million in, you got expensive pushing thirty. You know, that's not sustainable. And, and so. I believe one of the portion of Ted was, yes. But, but also take action with it being, it needs to prompt both sides, like both county and, uh, city of Bremerton. To, to probably have to put up the capital facilities plans, because when I look at the capital cities plan, uh, uh, city of Bremerton. It's not really there, and maybe there's a major amendment, I just haven't been able to find it, but, you know, they got their expenses. And things, and so. Now, I'm, I'm really concerned, because every time, so far, I think, and the sewer project is always in the process, it's way more. Especially the citizens, and we cherish it, and Alan started out, she.
It's up.
Way more expensive.
Yeah. Obviously.
We're on the whole. Look at, I mean, the offer had, it says they're completely almost paid for, and then they went. And try to get more, which okay, fine, but they didn't pan out, and so we had this test. And all I'm saying is that there is not a, a concise, comprehensive plan, and I've stated to the county, I don't know, after. You know, what City Shelton or other shit down, and you got a four hundred thousand page plan. And after getting an executive summary, you can say, this is what we got, this is what our capability here. Not the big, but big picture, and say, okay, it must take two, both, you know, bring this time to, if you bow and go, give it, give it, what do we really save it? Because there's all kinds of, here's it, and another thing. And another thing, I have a problem with this. Essentially, so it's in, it's that kind. But what needs to occur is we need, we, Mason County need to look at what King County has done with the twenty or so, twenty five different cities and and districts they serve in addition to King County, and see the good, the bad, and ugly, and how that works. You know, obviously, something's working, but you know, what I don't know, I have not taken the time, all I know is when you look it up, you see all done this, and you see these different agreements with these different municipalities and districts. So add up that to the county's attention. Because the industry, although that is no longer here. Until we do those kind of things, you cannot, you cannot move forward, otherwise you, all you do is, you know, it always ends up happening to citizens and and not, not gonna maybe not set fire to the others. You can't, you can't, this kind cannot afford another approach like we did with Allen or Balfour, we just cannot do that. And I'm just concerned that we, we get down that path, we're gonna do that. You know, having more, we're gonna spend our money and still remain in breaking even to the extent that it's just now after twenty seven years, twenty eight, twenty two years, the the Allen system is finally in a lap.
Okay.
They probably have some funds, you know, set aside, they're not set aside, they're cash, but it's in the last two years, if they probably, maybe three years, if they got a while. And we didn't have debt that Balfour has. So that's not mine, but that's my concern, so I would be honestly with the teaming it, but not, you know, marking it, but actually.
Okay. Those cable. When we tell our special meeting workshop, we can talk more about it. Uh next is the case in the Fisheries Task Force, uh which Travis is not here, so uh we'll skip over that. Uh no new items, and financial position report, is Erin gonna be, she's not gonna be here? Okay. Well, I don't have questions, but it would be nice to go through some of it, but.
Uh go ahead. Yeah, since you were trying to talk to with our.
Okay, so it's been a few months. Cause Travis said, he's gonna get back on that. Fine, we're, we're much better off than we were then. Uh my concern is this. If you look at those reports, you gotta, you know, you can't tell where your own budget. Uh you know, like, they believe if I'm, with respect to the water, legal, expenses related to water. I realize some of those are related to policy, but others are related to uh, you know.
Yeah, I see what you mean. Yeah.
I mean, I've been emphasized in the I understand that she cannot be, you know, an expert in all things. But it's, whatever it's like, okay? But we gotta somehow, maybe it's some type of oversight. So we know when it was, the uh, the uh, of course.
Well, we did, we did have her do that at one time, but then it became, isn't that like another report that was actually buried into this, but this was the simplified version? That's what I thought we had.
When you're going on this, I thought we had.
Okay. So we could ask Erin about that, because I know that we wanted to get the the percentages.
So I worked with the board then, and then I already get thanks. For to do that. All right, then I worked with Travis. You know, so we're trying to
Yeah.
Then last year's budget, regular budget process, we had Travis. And so I let him work it, and we both worked in it, and eventually got to the board, and actually worked and handled it. I'm trying to, trying to step away from that, and when I look at what you're getting for reports, there is no way it can pass through, there's another set of different plans. As an example. You can debate whether there should be six, there's about sixty three different sets, like, you can debate whether it should be sixty three or thirty.
Right.
Well, we haven't had that today, one. Two, you only have seven, another board.
True. I know that she had another one, though, because we were starting down that trail, where but you're right about the ones that we get is a simplified version. But you're right, because I know that she started to do that.
Because you, you.
Yeah, that's true.
And say no. Well, I don't want to.
Well, let let me, before we, let me ask Erin about that, because I know that we originally told her to break that down.
You know, the point either has to get in the context, you know, it's either the system, the person taking skills or call or something, okay? But that has to, that has to resolve, because you can't, I don't see how you can manage a plan that's just a report.
Where the, every dollar's gone, I understand that, that's true.
You know, and, you know. But when you're leaving six times what we budgeted for.
Well. Yes.
I can't have a whole minute seventy six. I can see with only one, uh, one substantial history, okay? Either way, it means you brought up, whether you're going to or not, you know, it's one thing if it's twenty percent, if they know you've made the work. But like if, you know, six times, either we screw it up in budgeting. Or, you know, there's a problem, or both. But I don't think we messed up on the budgeting, other than not understand the problem. Potential.
But you're right, I mean, I would agree with you in that, because I know that we originally had that, a lot of breakdowns and percentages to all of them, of what they were supposed to. So perhaps if I, if we get Erin to give us a quarterly with all of the breakdowns. And these, the simple ones monthly.
Right.
And then quarterly, get something, because it costs time and money for.
Well, I'm saying, like, who's no way talk to Dallas on the way down, and then bring this up. And that's in rough flow out of their cover.
Yeah.
And, you know, I would tell, I can not see, you know, and I would have to tell them, yeah, okay. You're right, but okay, so, yeah. We're gonna do it, and and I'm not asking for an answer right now, but what I'm saying is, it needs to I'm saying, if you try to figure about get this next going up, with all the categories we have, I don't know how you I look at that, I don't know how to strip it out.
Yeah, that's a good point, because you are.
Uh and when I talked to Travis last year, at, well, so and actually that we need to start the process, fine, that doesn't have to be perfect, but let's then find, you know, like, you know, the budget has uh, it's three tiers, you know, it has the water channel, and it has expenses, and, and, you know, everybody's set up. Maybe we don't have the sixty three, or we get the summary of those twelve, and the couple's, at least those twelve. Because there's no way you're gonna be able to plan, I, I look at that right now, and I don't see how knowing the extremes I have, working with Travis, working with the board, I then I went straight to trying to figure out how to create the budget.
Not a good point.
And I would like to step away from that, and it was volunteer effort. It's not how to sign up for. You're welcome, but I mean, what I'm saying is this no one thing should be limited to one person being involved, but should be able to carry on, because this is eight, Erin, and you said, she'd be able you know, I did my two bits, and if it's right, I can make a five, great, move ahead, and you go ahead. You know, the fact, the thing that's happened on the, on financial reports. Remember when I asked the, the board and Travis, and everybody agreed to produce, you know, I'll call it a trial balance, or basically a ninety day report on the water gun. Meaning.
Oh, yeah.
You know, ready, 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 and so, so you know where they are, where to focus, you know, time to collect, you know, funds and.
Yeah, okay, we had one of those.
I didn't see it, but that doesn't mean it.
Yeah, for sure. Well, that was, I think that showed in arrears, wasn't it? Wasn't it? Was it a detailed one of all of the customers for ninety days? Did you, did we get that report?
Yeah, we did, thirty day. We got it all before.
Sorry.
So Brian. That's, that's, that's.
Sure, well, we have it, I know that we'll have it, so you can get that.
Here's the board meeting.
Sure.
Here's, you can't let Travis do the thing. We don't know if some things are being said, you know, what, now that should be focused on. You know, as far as the, you know. I mean, the speaker, I know they had an opinion, and now it's not, I'm saying, you know. It doesn't, I'm just trying to say that. I'm just.
Well, I.
I'm, I'm really, what I'm really after is, I want the board to have the tools, if you have support. If the board can't, through the board, through the dredge, and be able to manage the finances in such a way that you know where you are.
Well, yeah, I appreciate that.
And I often say, right now, looking at it, I don't, can we think about trying to fix the budget for next year? About me, I'm looking at seven and trying to figure out what to write it down across, you know, sixty three or ten. Like I said, I'm not saying also if you require will see, look like it should be, but, you know.
I think that's kind of where we started, the next one time. Yeah.
But but because separation of water fund.
Yeah.
And, you know, and we got, and I'm more, because that, that's another thing, too, it looks again, um, you know, we have the, the water fund refunds, the general fund forward. Uh it looks like we're refunding more aggressively than we should be. Expenses, in other words, so expenses seem to be running about twenty, twenty five percent higher than the plan. From the water.
Yes, yes.
Paying the general.
Yes. Yeah.
Things that the general fund, I think, water fund has reimbursed, there's things that are every light on the side wrong, understanding the dollars, we're, they're only about twenty five percent ahead of or or should be. And again, can't tell that in the reports.
Yeah, or even if it's because remember, we talked about our percentages.
Yes.
Being raised, and so that may reflect that, but without designating that's what was happening.
Right, but but you, you need to maybe turn that on what you say, or do you say to somebody, say, okay, because remember, we, we did increase interest. Because that was a proportion to water. Um I don't know, there's a couple we increased because of the nature of what we have. And, you know.
Okay.
I'm, I'm engaged, why the wet can't tell, and so, you know, and and so to me, the mission all of the rest, and you can kind of say, okay. But yeah, this is, this is what we're respending a lot, a lot of climate expenses, so we need to pre-plan general fund this much. But we're, we're about, like, right now, it's only that twenty five percent.
Well, I'll bring that to Travis, and that, I can hear him now, well, it's gonna cost us a lot of money to break on. Because, you know, we pay her and, you know, time and effort. But again, it's our job. So, yeah. Yeah, I agree. I, yep, I agree. So I'll bring it before Travis and Erin, you know.
I'll try.
Okay. That's great, I appreciate that.
And if, if it has any questions, you have to, all right?
I don't think so.
The only thing that is notable on our expense report, we did have the easy, that's uh, that was about this, did any of these go on site?
Oh, okay. But is that in this one?
But, um, that was just already funded for.
Yeah, cuz.
Beyond that, I think for the.
Looks like they hit her one, one, one time. They went all over the place, getting parts for. That's good. We need to get them, so. Without why, they're going faster, and then, obviously we, we also have the you know, one of those is legit policies, I mean, both legit, but what's policies that was, you know, should play a role.
Hopefully that will change.
Yeah, but like, or I'm finding that's anything, same part. And about same amount, good point.
Okay.
So, most.
Difficult. Okay. Thank you, Jeff. So was there any questions, any more questions or anything?
No.
Uh I think we can move forward with, um, okay, uh moving the action items, BC and B.
I moved the dependence of your fund voucher, number two, five, zero, six, zero, 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 one, two, dash, two, five, zero, six, zero, 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 or three, the amount of nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. Uh pay law, uh bill number, here's number, two, five, zero, six, zero, 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 one, dash, two, five, zero, six, zero, 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 one, one. In the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty cents. And then the water fund voucher, two, five, zero, six, zero, 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 four, four, dash, two, five, zero, six, zero, 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 five, nine. You want seventy thousand eight hundred and seventy.
Well, second, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm so good. Okay, anything for the good of the order?
One question.
Sure.
You know, you know, in workshops, you basically don't take part.
Yeah.
Except, you know, this is our system. But we think about having some more comment, you know, with this financial section. Assuming that it gets in the work, as part of the workshop.
Sure. Last the chair. I love the chair.
Well, you're there. So you don't make a decision, you know, there's nothing wrong with you saying yes.
Okay.
You know.
Fine with me, you need the input, so.
Yeah, because there's quite, you, if we're gonna have a workshop on it. We need to do, and they're not saying anything.
Sure.
Or the public to say anything else, so.
Well, it's really critical, so like I said, well I'm sure you'll have a chance. Anybody else for the good of the order out there? Welcome, and thank you. Okay, anything else? Commissioner? Justine, no? Meeting adjourned.
Yes.
Anything, just send it for me.
Okay.